Call to order, the Metropolitan Planning Commission meeting of September 8th. It's good to see everybody and appreciate commissioners, you coming down and we have a full attendance, which is great to see everybody. So, we will go ahead and get started, which is first commissioners, item B, which is the adoption of the agenda, which was sent out earlier. And is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So there is.
There's a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted. Next is the approval of the August 25th, 2022 minutes, and those were also sent out earlier to you commissioners, and so we'll need a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing no other discussion, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and the minutes are adopted. And so now, we are on to the recognition of the council members, and our first council member was Council Lady Van Reese. Where'd she go? There she is, she was hiding. Hello, welcome. It's good to see you.
There it is. I made Patrick laugh, which is my best thing that I did today. Good afternoon, it's always good to see you. I have a few things that, in District 8, that have been moved to the 22nd meeting, so we'll talk about that next time we see each other. But today, still on the consent agenda is a project very near to Maplewood High School. It's a very unique project, and I want to just publicly thank the planning staff for being very diligent in making sure that something extremely unique, a new housing type, was made available. So I just wanted to thank them for that, so thanks so much.
Thank you very much. And so, before we get started, just a few housekeeping items. If everybody, I always try to remind myself, if everybody, just a reminder, put your phones on silent, that really helps us out, so we don't interrupt the meeting, we really appreciate that. And then next is, commissioners, as you know, these microphones are real sensitive, so I always remind myself and you guys to push the button slowly, if you turn it on, wait a few seconds, because we'll have to reset the system if we don't. So I'll probably violate that by the end of the night, but I will try not to.
Councilwoman Allen just walked in.
Oh, and we, I just saw another council lady. Councilwoman Allen, do you want to come up and speak? Okay, excellent. Well, thank you for coming down. All right, so now we're ready for item E, which is items for deferral or withdrawal. Lisa?
The following items are for deferral or withdrawal, starting on page 3 of your agenda. Item number 1, 2022Z 011TX 001, text amendment related to law averaging, staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number 2, 2007SP 048001, Zion Hill SP amendment, staff recommendation is to defer to the September 22nd meeting. On page 4 of your agenda, item number 3, 2022SP 026001, 4046 Murfreesboro Pike, staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number 4, 2022SP 040001, 2635 Gallatin Avenue Dog Daycare, staff recommendation is to defer to the September 22nd meeting. Item number 5, 2022SP 049001, 15th and Church, staff recommendation is to defer to the September 22nd meeting. Item number 6, 2021S 122001, re-subdivision of Law 18, Sherondale Heights, staff recommendation is to defer to the September 22nd Planning Commission meeting. Item number 7, 2022S 200001, Plan of Hamilton Place, staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. On page 5 of your agenda, item number 8, 2019SP 044001, 3699 Dickerson Road, staff recommendation is to defer to the September 22nd meeting. Item number 9, 2021SP 091001, Pen Hook Ridge, staff recommendation is to defer to the October 13th meeting, and I would note that that meeting will be held at the School Board Meeting Room on Bransford Avenue, and Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item number 10, 2022SP 046001, Walton Station, staff recommendation is to defer to the September 22nd meeting, and Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item number 11, 2022SP 055001, Bellevue Townhomes, staff recommendation is to defer to the October 13th meeting. On page 6 of your agenda, item number 16, 2022Z 082PR 001, a rezoning on Spencer Avenue, staff recommendation is to defer to the October 13th meeting. On page 7 of your agenda, item number 20, 2022S 090001, Winston Heights Concept Plan, staff recommendation is to defer to the September 22nd meeting. Item number 21, 2022S 095001, Green Lane Subdivision, staff recommendation is to defer to the September 22nd Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Lisa. And so commissioners, we'll go through these slow, just to make sure we get them right. And Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, but these are the following items for deferral or withdrawal. Items number 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 16, 20, and 21, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, commissioners, you've heard the items for deferral or withdrawal, is there a motion?
Can I, I just want to clarify that I'm recused from 8 and 9.
All right, Commissioner Blackshear is recused from items number 8 and 9, for the record. All right, any, okay, there's a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it, those items are deferred or withdrawn. All right, Lisa, we're on item F, the consent agenda.
As information for our audience, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items, unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. I will go through and read the items that were tentatively placed on consent, and ask if there is anyone in the audience in opposition of the item. If there's anyone in opposition, please raise your hand, and then that item will be presented at the time that it comes up on the agenda. On page 5 of your agenda, item number 12, 2022SP 059001, Chestnut Street, is there anyone in opposition to item number 12? Item 12 will be presented. Item number 13, 2022Z 076, oh, I'm sorry, no, that one is being presented, 13. Item number 14A and 14B, 2022Z 078PR 001, and the associated PUD cancellation, 484P 004. Is there anyone here in opposition of 14A and 14B? Those will be on consent. Item number 15, 2022Z 081PR 001, a rezoning on Ezell Pike, is there anyone in opposition to item number 15? 15 will be presented. Item number 17, 2022Z 084PR 001, a rezoning on East Argyle Avenue, is there anyone in opposition to item number 17? 17 will be on consent. Item number 18, on page 7 of your agenda, 2022Z 087PR 001, a rezoning on Manchester Avenue, is there anyone in opposition to item number 18? 18 will be on consent. Item number 19, 2022S 001R 001, subdivision regulation amendment, is there anyone in opposition to item number 19? 19 will be on consent. Item number 22, 2022S 155001, 1708 Carville Avenue, is there anyone in opposition to item number 22? 22 will be on consent. On page 8 of your agenda, item number 23, 2022S 18001, Stable Court Concept, is there anyone in opposition to item 23? 23 will be on consent. And item 24, 2022S 21001, Hidden Hills Resub, is there anyone in opposition to item 24? 24 will be on consent. Chair, I'm going to go through and read the captions now. As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with a decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. The following items are on the consent agenda. On page 6 of your agenda, item number 14A, 2022Z...
Hold on, Lisa, let's...
I didn't hear what she said.
Oh, it's item, so now she's reading the consent agenda. So she's said that 14A is on the consent agenda. So, are you opposed to it, sir?
I'm not opposed, I just had some questions, if I get a chance to ask questions.
Well, so...
I have to wait.
Well, no, if it gets placed on the consent agenda, then we pass it without, you know, questions being asked. And so if you would, if you'll talk to a staff member, Lisa, which staff member should...
Logan.
Hey, Logan, will you talk to this gentleman? Thank you. Why don't we, why don't you move to the next number, 17? Thank you, Lisa. And then we'll get back to, we'll come back, okay?
Item number 17, 2022Z 084PR 001, it's a request to rezone from R6 to MUNANS for property located on East Argyle Avenue, staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 18, 2022Z 087PR 001, it's a request to rezone from RS10 to R10 for property located on Manchester Avenue, staff recommendation is to approve, and I would like to note that Commissioner Henley is recusing himself from that item. Item number 19, 2022S 001R 001, a request to amend the subdivision regulations of Nashville-Davidson County, adopted on March 9th, 2006, and last amended on January 21st, staff recommendation is to approve the regulations and the effective date. Item number 22, 2022S 155001, 1708 Carville Avenue, it's a request for final plat approval to create three lots on property located at 1708 and 1710 Carville Avenue, staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. On page 8 of your agenda, item number 23, 2022S 18001, Stable Court Concept Plan, it's a request for concept plan approval to create seven lots on property located on Stable Court, staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. And item number 24, 2022S 21001, Hidden Hills Resub, it's a request for final plat approval to remove the reserve status of one parcel located at 4929 Lisa Ann Lane, staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Under Other Business, item number 28, to accept the director's report.
Thank you, Lisa. And so here's Logan, he's going to give us an update, make sure we're okay.
Oh, that one's already being presented. Yes, so the case that the gentleman was interested in is item number 15, which has already been pulled from consent.
Yes, and so we will hear that case. Okay, excellent. We always, everybody, just so y'all know, we really try to make sure that if there's questions on cases, that they, we get them answered, and so I appreciate y'all's patience while we run through this. So, all right, so 14A, yep.
On page 6 of your agenda, item 14A, 2022Z 078PR 001, it's a request to rezone from RS10 to RM20 and RM40 for property located east of Walton Lane, staff recommendation is to approve, and the associated case 14B, 484P 004, Arrowhead PUD cancellation, it's a request to cancel a portion of a planned unit development for properties located east of Walton Lane, staff recommendation is to approve, approve, yes, that's it.
Thank you, Lisa. So commissioners, here are the following cases that will be approved on the consent agenda, and those cases are 14A, 14B, 17, 18, 19, 22, 23, 24, and 28, is that correct, Lisa?
Yes.
All right, so commissioners, you've heard the items to approve on the consent agenda, is there a motion? There's a motion, second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted. I saw Councilwoman Tooms, do you want to speak now, or, I see, would you like to speak now, or, council lady? Come on up. So without objection, we'll go back to hearing council members, we like to make sure, we take care of our council members, council withers, right? Yes. Welcome, come on up, yep, come to the microphone, we get it on record. Thank you, council lady, for coming.
Good afternoon, commissioners, I'm Councilwoman Quante Tooms for District 2. I do not remember the number of the item, it is 1718 Pecan Street, and I say pecan, yes.
Hold on, we'll get the number, council lady.
Chair, it's item 13.
Item 13.
And so, this is one of my constituents who is wanting to rezone his property, he is wanting to put four units on his parcel. My understanding in talking with planning is that staff would support two. Mr. Roberts has gotten a petition together, where 27 of his neighbors have signed a petition, I've had a community meeting, and the neighbors are very supportive of this project, they're okay with four units. Unless there's some issue with there just not being space on the parcel for four units, and I don't think that that is the issue, the issue is that when you look at that street and the surrounding blocks, you just see two units per parcel. There are a couple in parcels that have multiple units, but they're corner lots. I am not opposed to him having the four units, I'm not worried about there being an influx of requests for four units if his requests were granted. Most of that street has been developed already, where they, like I've said, they've put two houses on a lot. I think that this would be beneficial for the neighborhood, it would help to continue to revitalize that area, it would help a native Nashvillian to, you know, and I know you don't look at the finances, but it helps in a great generational wealth for his family, which a lot of minority property owners don't get that opportunity. He plans on living in one of the units, again, the neighbors don't have an issue with it, I don't have an issue with it, so I think that it would be appropriate, in this instance, to allow him to do the four units. Again, I don't think it's going to, it's not going to wreak havoc on the, on the neighborhood in terms of infrastructure, it's just one project with four units that will look just like all the other houses on the street. So, those are my comments.
Thank you, council lady, for coming down and giving us your input and comments and some background. Thank you very much, we appreciate it. All right, I don't see any other council members, Director, do you see any?
I do not.
Okay. So, that puts us, that concludes the consent agenda, and so we are on item G, which is the Imagine East Bank information presentation. So I want to, our lawyers always tell us that this is a presentation, we're not allowed to deliberate on this particular item. You can ask questions, but we're not deliberating or debating this particular item, so just keep that in mind when you're asking your questions. We do have a special guest with us, who I am extremely fond of, he's a really good, he's really good at his job, he's nationally renowned in the public transit space, and that's Steve Bland from Wego. We appreciate Steve, would you raise your hand? I know he's going to probably talk, and I, but I personally wanted to say thank you for all your work. I also want to say thank you to our director for working on this project. East Bank was a really large shovel to lift, and no pun intended there, a lot of shovel work on this, on this project. And I also want to thank the planning staff and the team, they did outstanding work, and you'll hear that, and when you read this document, it's pretty amazing. I also, quite frankly, want to thank the vice chair and the commissioners, you guys have been heavily involved in this project from day one for the last two years, we've had several interesting meetings during COVID on this project, and so I want to say a special thanks to this commission and all the commissioners, you guys have spent a lot of time on it, and the staff working with us on this particular project, it's something to be very proud of, in my mind, and I hope, hopefully after the presentation, everyone will think the same. So Lucy, Director Kemp, I'm going to pass it over to you if, to start us off on this journey, okay? Or maybe it's the end of a partial journey, I guess, okay?
I think that's a good way of putting it. Thank you, we're looking forward to giving the information presentation today, as the chair mentioned, we hope you'll ask questions and seek information. We aren't holding a public hearing at this meeting, but we will at a subsequent meeting, we anticipate in early October, where we'll have a full public hearing and a vote around adoption of the plan as part of Nashville Next. But this is, we're at a really great moment in the vision presentation to the community, we're in the middle of a public comment period, and so this is part of that work. And in addition to the kind comments from the chair, I'm so grateful to the team for all of the incredible work on this, particularly Anna, you, for stewarding us to this point. So we look forward to the informational presentation and to the questions after.
All right, thank you Chair, and thank you Lucy for the intro. There are some other, I'm Anna Greider with the Planning Department, I have not presented to the commission in a while, so I'm a little rusty, but it's good to be back. There are some other folks here that can't answer questions, as you mentioned, Steve Bland here with CEO of Wego, also Bob Murphy, Director of Special Projects at Metro, Angie Hubbard, our Director of Housing within Planning, and Ben York, representing NDOT. So we have a range of expertise here, and we don't just have to rely on me to try to answer your questions. So I will get started here with this short informational presentation, just with some background on the planning process, and then give you some details since the plan was released in its draft form two and a half weeks ago, and how the engagement has been going, and some of the key pieces of feedback we've been getting, and then next steps. So just as a reminder, there were lots and lots of reasons to do the East Bank planning work, and some of the key ones are on your screen. We know that there is intense development pressure around the East Bank, and also throughout Nashville, there is also a lack of the adequate infrastructure to support potential development on the East Bank, and there are existing policy and zoning that would support high-density development. In addition to that, the need for improved flood resiliency, and to improve our relationship with the river, all kind of coalesced at this moment, 18 months, two years ago, to kind of ignite this process. And as a reminder of what a vision plan is and isn't, it is an aspirational document that lays out a future for the next 20 to 30 years, and is a reflection of the community's priorities that we heard through the engagement, and it's based on a great deal of research and analysis in best practices, and can be adopted and will be presented to you for adoption to become the new land use policy for this area, and guide you in reviewing rezoning requests, and can become the foundation for urban design overlays or other design-based zoning tools in the future, and also be a guide for public and private investment decisions. Those are all things that it very much can be, it is not detailed engineering or design plans, so the images you see in the vision plan are illustrations of the community's priorities and not necessarily what exactly will be built and constructed on the East Bank. It's not a rezoning in and of itself, and it's not a financing mechanism. As you know, we've been at this since April of 2021, and during that time, we've had over 20 public meetings, over 800 attendees, more than 150 technical meetings from federal, state, and local agencies, three online surveys, and we're now going through our fourth online survey. And from all of that, these were the four top priorities that we heard, the community wanted us to address in forming the vision plan, and I will be taking each of those four in order and showing you a snapshot of the feedback we've received so far. But those four are safe and simple multimodal connections, equitable and affordable East Bank, respect for the river, and neighborhoods for Nashvillians. So as I mentioned, the plan was released August 22nd, two and a half weeks ago, it is a 140-page vision document, which was loaded onto the website along with a 12-page executive summary, and an interactive story map, and an online survey. Since that was 17 days ago, we've also done 17 events and presentations, so it's been a whirlwind. We have eight upcoming events and presentations scheduled, and are always trying to fit in more. We've had nearly 5,700 clicks on the East Bank page since the plan was posted, over 500 unique viewers of the story map, and 175 survey responses.
Can I interrupt one? Is that the council member? Is it?
Yeah.
He's famous.
Yeah.
I was like, there he is, in his, I've never seen him in a t-shirt. Sorry, sorry.
You put him to work.
You put him to work, I didn't know he was part of the team.
Yes, the council members have graciously showed up to, Councilwoman Withers and Councilwoman Parker have graciously showed up to a number of our events and helped out, and this is Councilwoman Withers talking over a scale model that we have of the East Bank, which has been a real wonderful tool for visioning with folks. And here's some more images of the meetings we've had over the last 17 days, we were able to do an urban design forum with the Civic Design Center, we've had three open houses, we've been to the farmer's market three times, we've had three series of office hours, we were at the Cornelia Fort picking party, at the McFerrin Park Neighborhood Association, and then we have a number of topical meetings upcoming, one with Parks and Greenways for Nashville, one with Walk Back Nashville, and a number of housing-focused meetings, and we're continuing to add more wherever we're invited. So I'm going to take those four key themes that I mentioned, give a little reminder of what each of them covers, and then a snapshot of the feedback to date, and as I mentioned, we're just two and a half weeks into this process, so we're still continuing to receive feedback, and we plan to leave the survey open until the end of the month. And so I'll start with equitable and affordable East Bank, which was based on a lot of the feedback we heard related to both housing affordability, but also related to access to jobs, affordability of restaurants and retail, and places on the East Bank that feel accessible and welcoming to all folks. And so from the graph you see on your screen is a snapshot of the survey results as of yesterday, related to level of support for the proposed vision, and you see the 66% agree, and then at the bottom you see key topics, and those are either mentioned in the survey responses, or based on the conversations that we've been having at the various events, are the key pieces that we're hearing feedback on, on each aspect. So key topics here are related to, again, reinforcing the desire for affordable housing, and then questions or comments related to implementation. And just as a note, we are taking the feedback so that we can clarify and make edits to the document, and so when we do come back to you for adoption, you'll see revisions where we've been able to clarify or make requested changes. So those key topics are really helping guide us on where we might need to clarify or make edits. edits. Moving on to respect for the river, which was primarily relates to both resiliency, sustainability and flood plain management, but also to folks wishing to feel closer to the river and feel like the river is a great natural resource in our city and being able to be closer to it has been a big desire that we've heard in our engagement. You see, related to this level of support for the proposed concepts is 81% and the most mentioned topics continue to be access to the waterfront and flood protection. Safe and simple multimodal connections is also a big focus of this plan, both from multiple scales, from the regional level, looking at how the East Bank can really form a linchpin for our north-south connectivity more broadly and also how we can provide multimodal facilities within the East Bank. Survey results for that were 72% in agreement of supporting this concept and key topics here have been, received the most comments are related to transit and then support for the bike and pedestrian infrastructure proposed. Just to show a little bit more detail on the multimodal connections, just to really show the, the blue line in the center of your screen is the proposed East Bank Multimodal Boulevard and how that can connect more broadly to North Nashville and over to Murfreesboro and Lebanon Pike and then into east and west of our city. And then taking that regional scale into looking at downtown and our, our series of mobility hubs. You see WIGO Central and the new North Nashville Mobility Hub, the proposed Sobro Mobility Hub, and then the proposed East Bank Mobility Hub. And I know that Steve Bland would be more than happy to elaborate on that, so I won't try to do that here. And then to, to finish with neighborhoods for Nashvillians, again, looking at how the East Bank can become a series of new neighborhoods. And related to that feedback, 69% in support of the concept shown and the key topics mentioned here are stadium, which primarily is related to either questions related to the stadium or about how the East Bank should be a kind of 24/7, 365 feeling neighborhood and not just centered around the stadium. Questions or comments related to existing communities and impacts on existing communities and then no tourists is really, the comments are around creating the, an East Bank that is welcoming to, to locals and to Nashvillians and not just tourist-centric. And as you know, that the chapter that follows from that focuses on the, the metro-owned land. And so you'll see in the vision plan, we show both options, one with a relocated stadium and one with the stadium renovated in place. And as you see in the option A with the relocated stadium, the, the ability to do a large central park, which performs both, the opportunity for an urban park in the, in our core, but also performs stormwater management and performative landscape functions. And there are some images in the vision plan of what that could look like. If you can picture that underneath, all the fun that's happening on the surface is a hardworking stormwater management and water quality functions happening underneath. And so as you will see in the vision plan, we lay out both options and look at it from a, a much broader context than just the East Bank study area, but how it connects to the rest of our city. And just as a plug, we do have eight more events coming up for community engagement. Those are all listed on our website, but they all begin again in earnest on Monday evening with our Housing For All Community Meeting. Would be really glad to see any of you at our upcoming events. And as Lucy mentioned, we hope to be back in October presenting the vision plan to you for adoption. So that concludes my presentation and I will pause here and would love to hear your questions and comments.
Thank you. And commissioners, I think before we start asking questions, I would love for Steve to come up and kind of give his perspective on the, on the transit piece, which is an important part of the plan before we start asking questions. So welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members. First, I want to echo all the accolades for planning staff and Anna's work. We've been tremendously pleased to be a partner with planning in this. See a lot of familiar faces from some of our past excursions into the transit world in Nashville. And one of the things we really strive for to improve reliability, speed and convenience of service are those dedicated corridors. As I say to folks, the WIGO Star, our commuter train only runs on average about 40 miles an hour, but it's a reliable 40 miles an hour. If there's an accident on I-40 or the weather's bad or traffic is otherwise interrupted, it still runs at about 99% on time. So, so that's really a crucial element. By way of contrast, as most of you know, we have a downtown-centric system that radiates from the downtown core, much like our street network does. And on a good Saturday night, it might take us 15 minutes to take a bus through the downtown core, connecting those neighborhoods. So for us, one of the opportunities that was presented and that, and that Metro Planning graciously took up the challenge for is this north-south East Bank Boulevard. With the opportunity to kind of plan that right of way in advance, and I know they've been getting good cooperation from property owners on the East Bank, we can actually design in that north-south priority. So one piece of the plan that I think is really important in the future of public transportation is that north-south corridor. In fact, I was in an event with the mayor today. We talked about, well, what does this have to do with my neighborhood if I don't happen to live right in the East Bank? For us, it's about connecting the neighborhoods on all sides of the downtown core through the East Bank in addition to carrying people to and from the East Bank. The other element, one of the slides that Anna showed, showed our emerging, this one here, our emerging multi-hub model. The lines on that map are what we refer to as our frequent service network. Those are nine routes in our current system that either currently or are targeted for very frequent, very long service. So ultimately, seven-day-a-week, 22-hour-a-day service, operating at no worse than 15-minute frequency and generally a 10-minute frequency. Backbone of our system currently carries 80% of our riders on those nine routes and that ratio is growing. Over the course of the pandemic and since the pandemic, we've actually been able to build up more service in those routes and it's one of the reasons we're one of the fastest return to ridership systems in the country. A challenge with that is many of you who are familiar with our downtown Transit Center, WIGO Central, it's really bursting at the seams. On a typical weekday, we have 2,200 bus movements in and out of that building and about 17,000 customers that pass in and out. So particularly when we have school dismissal times, other peak period times, it really is at a crunch. So part of our long-range service plan is moving to a more decentralized model that includes neighborhood transit centers, much like the North Nashville one on the map. Many of you may have seen the new Hillsborough Transit Center that we've done in partnership with the school district down in Green Hills. We'd like to build out more of those over time. And even within the downtown core, trying to move to that multi-hub concept, number one, removes some pressure from WIGO Central. Number two, allows us to effectively increase our reach in the downtown core. When the siting for WIGO Central was done in the early 2000s, there wasn't a whole lot of development south of Broadway. There was certainly none on the East Bank other than the stadium and even Midtown until you got out to Vanderbilt was pretty limited. So it was sort of a natural. A lot of our commuters were bound for the state Capitol complex. Anymore, it's difficult. If your office is at the Bridgestone Building, south of Broadway, now in the emerging Midtown Market, certainly as Nashville Yards pops up, getting everybody funneled through the Capitol area is really a challenge. So the multi-hub concept would allow us to take, for instance, service out of the Murfreesboro Pike Corridor stops at the Sobro Hub, where there'd be connections to other points in the city. For instance, West End service, maybe via Division Street, on through the downtown core and even on to the East Bank for further connections. So for us, it's about simplifying connections so we can have more one-seat rides. So say a lot of us in our business, whether it be planning, transportation, we tend to look at high-level data, but I would try to personalize it in the view of one person. If you were living in North Nashville or Madison and maybe you have a job at the JW Marriott, you ride the bus into Central, you get off, you ride the escalator up or down, you make your connection, maybe that's five minutes, maybe that's 20 minutes, and then you ride on. So this model, as it emerges with other projects in the Metro-Nashville Transportation Plan, not just the East Bank vision itself, has the opportunity to improve convenience, speed, reliability of service, to really effectively serve a lot of our folks who don't have many transportation options and also make mass transit a much better choice for people who do have options. So that's sort of my summary and I'll look forward to any question that the commissioners might have.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you coming down. Director, any, any, any other comments before we open up questions to the commissioners? All right, commissioners, questions? Comments? Questions? Anybody?
Maybe the council?
Maybe the council member? I mean, he, he's famous.
I've talked about this about 60% of the amount of time that our staff has, so I'm pretty talked out, but have lots of feedback from constituents, obviously, that I hear, but I'm really interested in hearing from you, my fellow commissioners, and if there's something that you don't raise that I would like to ask staff about, I'll do that, but really want to defer to my peers on the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Anybody else? Yeah, Councilman, Commissioner.
Cliff. So there's been a fair amount of discussion already about this in, in the community. And one of the main questions is, of course, the relationship between this plan and the likelihood or the necessity for it being done in conjunction with a rebuild of the stadium, which I know adopting the plan would not necessarily mean that. There are financial issues and priority issues for the city as to whether we want to use revenue or bonding capacity for that as opposed to affordable housing, for instance. But just to confirm, there are, there is a separate question about whether we support this plan and whether we support or know what we think about the new stadium. I mean, obviously legally, there's a separation. But from what, what we're seeing, I guess, some of the items set out in the plan change if there's not a rebuild in a different place, right? Could you address that a little bit more?
Yes, absolutely. And I'll flick to, let me get to the slide so we have some visuals. And this again is just a zoom in on the metro and portion of the property. So we were working on this plan under the assumption of a renovated stadium for much of this process. And so the street network, the flood resiliency work, the developable land work was all done under the assumption that the stadium was remaining. And then earlier this year, when the announcement was made about the exploration for a potential new stadium, we were able to switch and see what the opportunities were with a new location. So the vision plan lays out both futures because the decision is yet to be made, but it shows that in both futures, the street network can work in both futures. The publicly accessible riverfront, which we've heard is very important, is a possibility in both, in either scenario. There are planning and urban design components that the Planning Department obviously really cares about, that we think could be advantageous in having a new stadium and freeing up the riverfront for more public accessibility. But we, the Planning Department, are not part of the kind of financial or lease conversations, so we're just looking at it purely from planning and design.
So much of this, it's a matter of, it, it, it could be done either way. Obviously, you started without thinking about a, a new stadium, without regard who pays for it, which hasn't been decided by anybody yet. Okay, thank you. I may ask some more later.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions, Vice Chair?
Sorry.
Oh, and then we'll, then we'll go to Commissioner Tibbs.
So as you just said, we're, we're focused on this from a, a planning and design perspective. Can you talk a little bit about what tools we have to address the goals that, you know, my first, my first interest is around affordable housing, but generally the, the goal of an inclusive and equitable community. What, what kind of resources do we have and how will we, you know, how can this plan help to further that goal, given the role that we have?
Yes, and I will call on Angie to get us started with the affordable housing component.
Angie, can you just state your, your full name and position? That way we get on record. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Angie Hubbard, Director of Housing with the Planning Department. And thank you for that, Vice Chair, because when we hear the term affordable housing, I could ask every single person in this room what that means and everyone has a different definition. And that's, that's why we made a commitment, actually, when, when our division was created to resident-centric approaches. So our approach to both affordability, but it also leads to equity, is getting back through this community engagement process with our Affordable Housing Task Force and with a community meetings that are housing-focused. And two of the, two of the main outcomes are the, of that is to unpackage what they mean, people mean when they say affordable. We could sit behind a desk all day long and think of numbers and AMI and we know that that does not get us to where we need to be. So really getting, meeting people where they are in terms of their housing needs. But to make it equitable, it's also having conversations of what that neighborhood, neighborhood needs to have in place for people to have a sense of belonging. There are also barriers to housing outside of just the cost of the rent. It's barriers to background, it's barriers to types of assistance someone may use. And so getting into those deep conversations so then we could have the right strategies to make sure that the housing that is being created is attainable to everyone at different income levels. And at the same time, we've got to make sure that it's also feasible and that's where the task force really comes in, that group of experts of what are strategies to make sure that when we set housing goals and we look at resident resources, that we can find the right tools. We already have a great set in our toolkit now. Two of the biggest commitments that we are making as the city is to retain the ownership, public ownership of the land and also dedicating some portion of the land to do some deeper affordability. And those are, those are the ways that, that we're building in those mechanisms to ensure that it's not only affordable, but it is equitable.
Commissioner, one of the things that Angie and we're so grateful for her leadership on this recommended to us is that we think of the East Bank developing in phases. And that's appropriate because it is a lot of land to develop over time. The vision is meant to anticipate sort of the whole view and sort of where we want to go over time. But I think Angie's recommended that we think of the affordability and the attainability in phases and set those, those benchmarks with real-time information, which is a way of understand, ensuring that we can right-size as we go along. Is that fair to say?
Absolutely. Any of us that's been in the housing space for any period of time realize just in the past year, the, the area median income, which is a, a target all of us throw around in, in this space, had such a shift, an impactful shift on Davidson County residents that if we had actually set goals into the future based on last year's AMI, we would be so missing the mark on affordability. So that's why this phased approach gives us that opportunity to have touchpoints with the community to make sure that subsequent phases are still in line with the housing needs as those are updated over the course of the year. So that is a, a very critical piece. Thank you. And this is also serving as a model. This is an unprecedented opportunity wherever in the history of the city we've ever been able to do this. But to take these processes and these opportunities and then show elsewhere in the city where we have the opportunity to incentivize or create housing, exactly how to get this right. And that's what these community engagement opportunities are, are going to lead to is getting this right for everyone.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Tibbs?
It's probably an easy answer, but I noticed that there are, you know, the designs are very attractive and, you know, and there's a lot of creativity, a lot of various designs as well. But, you know, I'm assuming though, they're not already designed or are there design standards if they're not? Or can you just kind of, for the record, just kind of make sure we're all informed on that part?
Anna.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Commissioner. Yes, they're just illustrations, conceptual illustrations that are helping to provide, provide Yes, they're just illustrations, conceptual illustrations that are helping to provide pictures to the intent of what the community, of what we heard the community would like to see. So we are including within the vision documents some principles, and those are mostly within the Neighborhoods Chapter related to intent we would have for development standards, including statements about the encouragement of multifamily housing and not single-family housing on the East Bank. And so there is a lot of vision and aspiration, but that's what it is at this point, and it wouldn't get to the design detail until a UDO or some other zoning tool was coming before you.
Thanks.
One thing I might add, and this is actually a really good image here to talk from, because I think what we do want feedback on is the idea of having tree-lined streets at that scale of a street with bike facilities, because that's very much part of the decision that we're making right now. When you get the Major and Collector Street Plan update in a few weeks, part of what we're going to be proposing is a street grid, and in some instances with specific right-of-way. And so that is, it's more than aspirational. But I think to Anna's point, when you look at the buildings, we chose red or orange brick here and not, you know, a different color, that I would not take to heart. But I think the scale of the buildings, and I mean, that's something that we would very much welcome feedback on, because at a point in the future, you will see a design, more specific design standard for the metro-owned land and perhaps others that will more specifically guide development in the future. And so it always helps us to get that sort of feedback. But the building here is not designed, so thank you for clarifying. No, it's helpful because you want to, I really want the public to, you know, feel like the types of feedback that they're getting and at what point is able to resonate and have an impact on the plan, which it does, yeah.
So commissioners, there's a lot more work probably that we'll see, and that a lot of more concrete, no pun intended, I keep coming up with these little sayings today. But we'll see a lot more detailed UDOs, potentially zoning, potentially street plan network. There'll be a lot of concrete things that we'll have to approve. So there's, our work is really just beginning as a commission from that perspective, and we'll be working with the council members in that area, and this is just really a start, but it's an impressive start, I think. Any other commissioners? Oh, gosh, the Vice Chair, she's back.
Well, no, I just, and I asked this to Anna when we were doing our briefing, but one of the things that makes these pictures so pretty is that there are not utility wires going through the entire thing. Has NES been brought in to talk about the possibility of undergrounding with all of our new infrastructure?
Yes, that's a great question, yes. I didn't mention or go into detail on all the technical meetings that we've had, but yes, we have met regularly with NES to talk about their current infrastructure on the East Bank and future infrastructure needs, given potential development. And we've had long conversations with engineers related to the technology and burying of lines within a floodplain or adjacent to a floodplain and the opportunities there. So those detailed conversations are ongoing, but we have started to discuss the opportunities there with NES, and they've been a great partner so far.
Excellent question, Vice Chair. Yep, Commissioner Johnson?
Just one question about the Central multimodal way. I was reading, you know, some input on the social media setting, and I thought the comment was interesting. Somebody said the multimodal corridor in Central is divert the traffic from I-24, 40, and 65. And so the comment was, I cannot believe those, they're trying to put all the traffic into the neighborhood. But I think that intent is not that trying to divert those traffic, but rather create new, you know, multimodal into that. So if you want to talk about that intent, that would be great.
Yeah, oh, sorry. Okay. I might call on Bob or Ben as well. But just, yeah, we've heard that narrative, and that's part of what's really good about getting a draft out and getting feedback, is that we can have the opportunity to clarify things like that. So I'll let Bob go into a little more detail on that.
Yes. Okay. Your comments, I think, are exactly correct.
Bob, before you start, just state your full name and...
I'm Bob Murphy, and I'm Development Director with the East Bank Planning Team for planning. And so I was going to say, your comments are exactly right. We're not envisioning the East Bank Boulevard to funnel all the traffic from I-24. The idea is the East Bank Boulevard is going to provide connections to the existing neighborhoods, and particularly East Nashville area with the Cleveland Street connection is a key connection. Right now, as you're probably aware, for a lot of people who want to travel north-south in that area, the only north-south continuous artery is I-24. So a lot of people are on I-24 for maybe one interchange or two interchanges, which is really not the purpose of I-24. So those people would probably be, it would probably be more logical for them to take the East Bank Boulevard for those type trips. So it's really an idea of trying to make sure that we're providing that street for people who need it for more direct connection, certainly not to divert traffic from I-24.
Thank you, Bob, and we're glad you're on the team. We appreciate that. Great question. Any other questions before we...
Yes, one more question.
One more question, Commissioner.
I really appreciate, you know, a great outreach. I think media such as newspapers are putting this topic on the media outlet, so that, you know, all the people, the Nashvilleian is engaged with East Bank. But sometimes I think, you know, we are not reaching the intended audience because, you know, this, especially multimodal right-of-way acquisition, and chunk of the land, East Bank, is owned by metro government. So in a way, every city Nashvilleian is stakeholder. So is there, you know, you guys are doing great, and news media outlet is doing great. Is there any intended audience or stakeholder we are not reaching? Or if there is, is there anything more we can do before we adopt this plan?
Yeah, so that's one of the things that we've been tracking now that we're kind of two and a half weeks into the engagement, is looking at the demographics of who are we reaching. And so we're starting to add some more targeted engagement to broader demographics. So we're going to do a town hall with the Urban League. Our Neighborhood Advisory Committee is a very diverse group of folks that represent the area, and so we're going to lean on those folks to help us get the word out more to their communities, and trying to invite ourselves to as many meetings as we can to reach audiences that we aren't seeing in the demographics so far. So yes, we're at a good point partway through the engagement where we can kind of correct course and adjust, and so we're starting to do that. And if any of you here have ideas for how to do that or have done it successfully, we would take those on board as well. So yeah, thank you, that's a great question.
All right. Anyone else? Want to make sure the Councilmen?
I've heard this quite a bit myself, but also hear from a lot of constituents, and this is a little bit of a larger audience that is able to tune into this meeting than maybe some of the others that we've had to date since the launch a couple of weeks ago. But there's a lot of discussion, I think, about, particularly with the multimodal Spine Street, about to what extent it is multimodal, and I've seen some commentary about that in some different sources. And just wanted to see if staff could talk a little bit more about the thought process that's gone into, I think particularly for bike lanes and other things, about there are different bike facilities that are present throughout, both north-south and east-west across the East Bank, and maybe if staff could talk a little bit more about, number one is why there are not bike lanes on the, at least today, on the multimodal Spine Street, but also how the vision document envisions multimodal connections other than cars. I just feel like that's something that comes up a lot, and this would be a really good time to talk about that.
Anna, do we have a hidden slide that shows the bike network? Because that might be helpful as Bob is speaking.
Yes, Bob Murphy again with Metro Planning. So just kind of overarching concept is providing a very robust, comprehensive network of bikeways and sidewalks. So what this slide is going to show, I think, is the planned bike network. And as you alluded to, the Boulevard itself does not going to, is not going to have a bike lane per se. And the idea is we're going to provide access to the Boulevard through the parallel north-south streets, as well as the intersecting streets, which will all have very well-designed, state-of-the-art, safe and comfortable bikeway facilities. And so the main concept is to try to make sure that we're providing what we call low-stress, comfortable bike facilities that would accommodate cyclists of all ages and abilities. And so there's so much going on, or will be, on the Boulevard with, you know, dedicated transit lanes, automobile traffic, very wide sidewalks that are heavily used, that combining the cyclist in there too, we feel like, is not as advantageous as having these intersecting streets and the parallel streets provide these, this accessibility to cyclists. So, you know, we feel very strongly that this is going to be the most comprehensive network from a cycling standpoint in Nashville, without question. We have adjacent, the adjacent north-south streets on the west side against the, close to the river, there will be a street waterside drive that will have protected bike lanes. On the east side of the Boulevard, Second Street will also have protected bikeways, and then the intersecting streets will have those as well. Another point I think is really worth making are the regional connections that are going to be made with this plan. As you know, Oracle is planning a bicycle pedestrian bridge to go over the Cumberland River. This will connect to the Germantown Greenway, which continues all the way up to the Metro Center Greenway. Then with that connection and the extension of the East Bank Greenway, ultimately to Shelby Bottoms, you know, you will have a bike connection and pedestrian connection all the way from Metro Center through Shelby Bottoms to Stones River. So really a regional network. Another important bicycle pedestrian connection that's going to be made is the Gray Street Connection. And there, TDOT is, will be working to provide a bicycle pedestrian overcrossing at Gray Street, which connects to McFerrin Park and really opens up, along with the Cleveland Street extension, opens up all of East Nashville from a bicycle and pedestrian standpoint. So we feel very confident about the concepts, the, you know, how this design will work in terms of ensuring that we're going to have a very comprehensive, low-stress bike network that'll be comfortable for, like I said, all ages and all abilities.
Thank you, Bob, and excellent question. You guys are knocking it out of the park today with all these good questions. All right, any other questions? We'll make sure we get it all out, and, because it's really good for really good discussion. All right, thank you, Commissioners, I appreciate that. So now we're on to item, Anna, and thank you. I didn't say thank you, and I want to say thank you for all your hard work. It's good to have you back, speaking to us again. I know you missed us.
Thank you.
All right, so now, Commissioners, we're on Item H, which are items to be considered in the normal part of our meeting. And so we have three items tonight, just for everybody to know which ones they are. It's Items 12, 13, and 15 for public hearing. And so we'll get Item 12 pulled up for the presentation.
Dustin Chainstaff Planner, this is Item 12 of Chestnut Street SP. This is a request for an SP to permit a mixed-use development on north side of Chestnut Street. And our recommendation is approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions. Current zoning on the site is IR, industrial restrictive, and the current policy is T4 urban mixed-use neighborhood. So on the screen there, on the top half, you see a section view, bottom half, you see a plan view. Left side of the screen is a performance venue, right side is an office building with retail at the bottom, and then in the center is a pedestrian pavilion. So this mixed-use development, as I said, a performance venue, 111,000 square foot with some retail at the bottom. The office building, 153,000 square feet, with more retail ringing the bottom along Chestnut Street, and then a parking garage of comparable size with 350 spaces on a shared parking plan because the uses will have different peak hours. I also want to point out that parking is not required at this site because this is an immediate need multimodal corridor per the MCSP. The parking garage won't count towards the floor area ratio cap, which is set at 2.5. It will feature heights of four stories and 92 and a half feet on the performance venue and five stories and 76 feet on the office building. The pedestrian pavilion will have retail uses and seating. Along Chestnut, you will have a sidewalk, bike lane, and planning strip in line with the MCSP, and then also a Wego stop and rideshare pickup and drop-off. Yeah, and the parking, I want to point out, too, is underground, that parking garage, so it will not, it will not need to be screened or anything above ground. They're providing contextual brick architecture in line with the area. I'll run you through some of that. This is a perspective view showing the performance venue on the left, office building on the right, and then the pedestrian pavilion in the center. Here's some elevations of the performance venue showing the traditional architecture they've worked out. And then here's a perspective from the ground showing the entrance into the pedestrian So we judge that this is consistent with the goals of the T4 MU policy, which is to enhance and create mixed-use neighborhoods and feature high levels of connectivity and complete streets. We also judge it's compatible with the Wedgwood-Houston-Chestnut Hill Small Area Plan, which calls for respecting the industrial heritage and architecture of the area. It says that the new construction should reflect and respond to the surrounding buildings, which we feel like they're doing, they're in Character Area 1. And then the plan does allow for heights above four stories if you're providing active uses and enhanced streetscaping, which we judge they are. And then also, they're abutting a rail yard, so it actually acts kind of as a transition into the neighborhood. So our recommendation is approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. So we'll open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant in the room? Come on up. Welcome. And please state your name and address, and you have 10 minutes and can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal. And we have to turn your microphone on, it's, hold on, we'll... There we go. Can you hear me? Great. Yeah.
Hi, my name's Pablo David, uh, 429 Chestnut. Uh, thank you first and foremost to the staff for long, long months working with us to get to where we are, uh, today. Uh, we are very excited for the mixed-use development, um, as described, um, not only the retail component, the office component, which we envision to be a more, uh, neighborhood, user-friendly sort of, um, commercial space, along with the complimentary, uh, music venue. Um, we imagine, uh, a lot of different neighborhood-focused services, uh, to be the tenants in the commercial building. And, um, you know, while there's been some sort of last-minute, um, misunderstandings, um, we've always planned to work with the community and with SNAP, that's something that's extremely important to us. Um, we are a neighbor, our headquarters are right across the street from this site, um, and we are excited to work with our community members, and we've actually had a meeting, um, on the books for quite some time, um, to reflect that. And, um, ultimately, um, you can see from the support letters that you've received, as well as from a lot of online discussions among our neighbors, there's certainly, um, a lot of support, uh, for this project, and we're excited to bring it to Wedgwood Houston. Thank you. And, uh, with that, I'd also like to reserve my two minutes at the end and introduce Mike Heinz.
Thank you, and we'll keep going. Keith, you can keep going. And then, well, as, as long as you don't go over to the two minutes, we'll save it.
We'll do our best. Thank you all for your time, uh, the Commissioner and Chairman. My name's Michael Heinz from Hartrem Plunkett Architecture. Uh, we are located in Chicago, Illinois, at 315 West Walton Street. We've been working with AJ Capital Partners, uh, in Nashville, but more specifically in the neighborhood since 2018, on a variety of developments in the immediate context of this. Um, we are excited to have the opportunity to present this to you today, uh, as a kind of continuation of the other work that we're doing in the neighborhood. Uh, thank you to Dustin for his presentation, walking you through everything. Um, I, I think we really also wanna say thank you to all the planning staff and to the councilmen. We, we started working with them at the beginning of the year, in December of last year, January of this year, and through several rounds of back and forth, I, we have addressed the building height, the building density, the massing, the building materiality, in conversations with the planning staff and the councilmen, and I think it really has been an effort to get to the point that we are today, um, and the result that we're seeing here that, that we are really excited about sharing. Um, you know, by pushing all the parking underground here and leaving active uses at the ground floor, we do really feel like we're enlivening the streetscape along Chestnut, including the addition of the Plaza that is in line with Martin Street at the Terminus. Um, and we look forward to hearing your feedback and questions. Um, with that, I will introduce Megan Siegler from KCI, with just one, couple last notes before our time is up. Thank you.
Come on up.
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm Megan Siegler with KCI Technologies. We're at 511th Avenue North, um, in Capital View, and we conducted the traffic impact study following NDOT procedures. Uh, after scoping the study with NDOT, the study was submitted and reviewed, and NDOT has provided conditions. KCI and the development team agree to and concur with these conditions, which are established to mitigate the traffic impacts of the development, and if you guys have any questions, we welcome those.
Thank you. So we'll reserve two minutes for your rebuttal. All right, and, and before I move on, I forgot to tell everybody, sometimes we have a lot of new folks that come, so, uh, we have the presentation, then we open the public hearing, uh, and then we have the, um, applicant come up, and then we have folks speak in, uh, favor, and then we have, then we do all those folks together, and then we have the opposition that will come and speak, and then we have the rebuttal, um, and then we have the council members speak, and then we'll close the public hearing, and that's when we'll deliberate as the commissioner. I just wanna make sure everybody knows that, so there's no confusion, and then when you come up and speak, just make sure that you, um, you have two minutes, the timer is right over here, uh, you can see it while you're speaking, um, and just tell us your name and address for the record. So now we're on to folks that wanna speak in favor. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Come on up.
Commissioners, members, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Dwayne Cuthbertson, 409 Merritt Avenue, uh, live in the neighborhood. Um, I am here to, um, urge you to support this SP. Uh, the owner and developer has a pretty deep track record of creative, attractive, well-thought-out projects in this neighborhood already. A fair amount of it's already built and performing, and I think contributing positively to the quality of life in this community. Um, this SP proposes another pretty attractive set of buildings, and, uh, one of those being, I think, a pretty nice music venue. Um, what's before you, I think, adds to the architectural and programmatic collection that is making this neighborhood a pretty special place to live. This SP contributes a ton of public infrastructure, and I think it also adds a pretty quality public space, um, to our neighborhood. Proposes a development plan on a large, non-contributing tract of property that's at the edge of our neighborhood. Um, so any negative impacts that you might associate with this development, I think, are mitigated by its location at the very edge of this neighborhood. It's not near, uh, or in the middle of the neighborhood, if you will. It seems to be consistent with our community plan, it's compatible with the surrounding context. Uh, as you all know, we have a council member that has, it's a history with this developer, but he's very informed when it comes to planning, uh, and development issues, and he's demonstrated thoroughly that he cares about community impact, so I'm confident that if there are any issues that haven't been ironed out, uh, he'll certainly make sure that they are resolved before it gets to the council public hearing. So, uh, again, it's consistent with this community plan, so I would urge you all to recommend approval and move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Come on up. Welcome.
I'm assuming this is on. Yep, it is, all right. Um, first, thanks for allowing me to be here, um, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'm Ernest Morgan, I live at 409 Merritt. Uh, there's four homes on that lot, in case you think we live in the same home, we don't. But, uh, I really wanted to come and just show support for, uh, for this project. And, uh, one of the primary reasons that, that I personally, um, get sort of emotional about this project is, uh, it's bringing back some history that we don't always talk about, which is music. And this project gives a head nod to United Records, which is, was the, uh, printing label or the printing press for, uh, for Motown. And you even get more emotional when you think about, that was the only place for blacks to actually say that we're performing here in Nashville, um, for quite a while. This project is right across the street and does, it gives a great head nod back to, uh, a lot of the history that we probably forget about and don't talk about very much. Um, and there will be a lot of opportunity for us to bring additional jobs to a, really, a bedroom community. There's some, um, uh, I've heard some conversation about the noise that it could potentially bring to the neighborhood. Um, and AJ, I'm sorry, I think this is the worst lot in the neighborhood because it's right next to the train drive, right? So I can't think of too many things that we can actually do, uh, with that lot to make it be a, and have a positive impact for the neighborhood. So, uh, I really just wanna show support for AJ Capital and, uh, what they're doing for our neighborhood. Um, I've been very impressed, um, uh, and for transparency purposes, I'm on the board for, for SNAP as well. Uh, not representing SNAP with, with what I've just mentioned, but, um, as a resident in the neighborhood, I'm in full support of the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Make sure we get everybody. Come on up. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. Chad DiDonato, I'm at 409 Merritt. That was my husband, so we do live together. Um, I won't be as elegant as the others, but I do think, uh, it's a great asset to the neighborhood. I really love the design and how it really fits in. If you didn't know, I'm assuming it would, you would think it had been, been there 100 years. Um, so I love that, I love the fact that they're bringing people into the neighborhood. I think when you bring people in, you're making it more safe because there's more eyes on things, so I think actually that's a good thing. So, I'm just here in support, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Give everybody a minute. All right? Seeing no one else wishing to speak for it, anyone in opposition? Come on up. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you, uh, members, for, uh, taking some time to hear some comments. Uh, my name is Shay Sap, I live at 1518 Raines Avenue, which is in the Wedgwood Houston neighborhood, uh, where this project is taking place. Uh, I'm also on the board of SNAP. There's various board members have different positions on this, as we've heard from the people speaking in favor of it, and, uh, I'm one of the board members who works closely with AJ Capital and one of the, some of the various projects they have in our neighborhood. Um, so I do know the benefits, uh, that they bring. Um, they've done multiple phases, uh, multiple projects, different phases had different impacts on the community, obviously, and, uh, SNAP's had a different role in all of them. The reason I'm hearing opposition of this one today is more because this process for this hasn't followed the process of other phases that they've done. Um, if we just look at other projects that we've heard here tonight, public input's very important, um, and for this project in general, they have reached out to SNAP and scheduled a meeting with us later this month, but that's just with the SNAP board. Uh, I personally feel that we need to have a broader community input session on this. Whether the community as a whole embraces this or not, I think there's significant input that the community can have on this project, the community that's gonna be there living with this. Um, and I just request that we possibly defer this, uh, so that we have time to get that input that's so crucial to a project like this that could have a significant impact on the community with some features that the, the neighborhood just hasn't seen before, like a four-story concert venue that fits thousands of people. So, just the time for the community to actually have that input and, uh, work more with the developer is what, uh, I'm here today to, uh, to ask for. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Dakota Gordon, and, uh, I live, uh, uh, just right down the road, uh, toward downtown from the Wedgwood Houston area, and because I live in such a tourist spot, um, I, I go to the neighborhood, uh, for, for kind of a personal neighborhood experience. Uh, it's, it's my kinda, kinda go-away, I can take my dogs, I can go eat, see, I've made some friends down there, it's, it's homely and I, I'm grateful for it. So naturally, when I became aware of this project, um, I became concerned and, and had some questions, um, four to be exact, and I believe if, if these four questions are answered, uh, it'll leave this body better able to make a decision regarding the project. Um, first, um, and I heard someone just speak to it, but have you conducted, or do you plan to conduct a traffic study before approving this project? I understand that this project didn't necessarily start out as a concert hall, it kind of got its foot through the door as a, as a, an, an office building, and so I, my curiosity is, was, was the traffic study that you've done and completed, was that over for a, an office building, or was that for a, um, a, a 4,000, 4,500-seat arena that's, that you guys are looking to be approved? I'd, I'd like to know which one and, and kinda how that goes. Uh, past that, uh, the traffic is already bad enough down there at the new soccer stadium. Uh, don't we think that another, uh, venue in that area of this magnitude, um, that, that there's, there's not adequate parking for is gonna make it much, much worse? Um, I, I, I go down to the soccer games often as I'm a fan, and, and I see, uh, people parking in, in yards, people parked on the streets, I see neighbors have signs out in front that say "No Parking," I see people, uh, very polarized on, on the subject already. So, I, I wonder why we would want to take, uh, another step and, and kind of make that an even tighter area with, with more traffic and such. So, growth is great, but, um, there's also a historical aspect to this, I know, I know it's great that we celebrate one history, but we're also digging right next to Fort neglect, and that's, that's some concern. So, my question is, can we defer this, uh, to a later time with more information, uh, so we can do some more studies? Didn't get to all my questions, but thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'm a terrible closer, but I'll give it my best shot. Um, my name is John Sewell, I live at 477 Chestnut Street, right next to Gabby's. If you've been there, you've probably enjoyed that, um, it's an old Victorian there. I'm the closest neighbor to this project, um, interestingly enough, I'm also a PhD student in public history, so I'm pretty stoked about where I live in the neighborhood, um, in the middle of so many cultural assets. Uh, I totally dig that there's a lot of, uh, there's a couple letters of support that were presented, um, and so, many of those were several new neighbors to Wedgwood Houston, I think that's great. Um, I think the buildings are awesome. I think what, what they've done and how they're trying to integrate the architectural context and their design is well-thought-out, I think that's super cool. Um, uh, the idea that, hey, they're taking over an empty building and activating it seems somewhat disingenuous because they bought the building and it was active before they bought it, so I'm not, I'm not really too convinced by that argument. Um, I do dig that it's a music venue across from United Records. I've been on a few, uh, records that were pressed there, and it's an awesome asset that we've had. There used to be another one, just for, uh, everyone to know, down the street. But my, those are really problems about the living. For me, I'm really more concerned about the dead and the, uh, cultural heritage that's under the ground, because we have, uh, we're building bodies, uh, we're building buildings on top of bodies, one lot over. So, I think we should probably respect our cultural heritage a little bit more, and I think part of what would sway to me mitigate that is asking them to do architectural work before the building gets underway. And that's all I'm asking, I'm not even against the thing, I'm just asking for us to do due diligence for our cultural inheritance, cause that's, um, pretty important to me, and, uh, I'll leave it there.
Thank you. I think there's still more folks, I think, yep, oh, come on up. There are a few more folks, come on up. Let me make sure we get to everybody.
Good afternoon. My name is Weston Hurd, I live in 907 Birchwood Avenue, I'm, I'm in East Nashville, but frequent the Wedgwood Houston area multiple times a week. Um, and for me personally, I am not super for what's going on here, especially for the traffic conditions that it's going to cause. Um, in my experience traveling from Wedgwood back to my area of town, it's usually not too big of a deal, however, with, uh, such a large increase in the amount of people that will be coming through that area, um, especially late night, and as we know how Broadway is not the, uh, or brings a lot of partygoers and people wanting to go to events and things of that nature that can cause, um, dangerous conditions on our highways, um, I feel like this is only going to, um, create more issues in that across the city. Um, and then also just kind of, um, backpacking off of what's already been mentioned, um, I feel that there hasn't been enough of a reach to the community of people actually knowing that this is going on, um, so, in that, I just feel that there needs to be more consideration, um, before this moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else? Seeing none, uh, rebuttal. Two minutes.
Uh, do you want me to restate?
You can say whatever you need, you, we, we know who you are, yeah.
I just wanted to really reiterate our commitment publicly to, um, great communication with not only the neighborhood, but with the SNAP board, and we are willing and open to answer any and all questions, um, that they have or any of our neighbors have. Um, I think our track record speaks a lot to that and our involvement in the neighborhood, and just wanted to, just say publicly, like, we are 100% committed to, to engaging with the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and the councilor is not here, and I think we have some information from the council member before we start our discussion, and the director can do that after, once we close the hearing, so. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed, and, uh, Director, I think, what did the council member say about the project, Lisa?
Sure, um, yes, uh, Councilmember Sledge wasn't able to attend, um, but I was in contact with him, um, we generally like to understand what a council member's viewpoint is. Um, his position, um, on this project is, um, of support and passage from the Planning Commission today, um, with a commitment for multiple community meetings between now and when it's introduced on first reading, um, which would not, if it went through today, be until, um, the first meeting in, um, October, um, and so, he, that was what he wanted me to express.
Thank you, and absolutely, we try to, we always try to have either a letter from the council member or communication, or if, if they're not here. Vice Chair, you wanna go first?
So it sounds like there haven't been...
And Commissioners, Vice Chair, if you'll just, it's, the microphones are not, um, turned up real loud, so make sure you just pull, pull it close to, yeah, talk loud.
Um, I just, it, it sounds like, um, there haven't been any commu- I just, it sounds like there haven't been any community meetings yet on this?
The council member expressed that there has been, there is a community meeting, that the applicant has been in contact with SNAP and that a community meeting has been scheduled for September 20th with the SNAP board, I believe, and that he's committed to community meetings in advance of council. But I don't believe there has been one, two day they have been in contact.
Okay.
And scheduled.
I think this seems like a great project. I think the design is exciting, and it seems like it's the right, I mean, it seems like it fits well with the character of Wedgwood Houston, and I really like the blend of the old and the new architecture. I'm a little surprised, just knowing the councilman, that there hasn't been a community meeting so far, and I know how active this neighborhood is and how closely he's worked with the neighborhood. And so I do have a feeling of, you know, and I have full confidence that he would have the community meeting prior to first hearing, but I would also, depending on my other commissioners, be open to thinking about a deferral to make sure that that meeting does occur. I feel like that's sort of our general practice, and if there is opposition in the community and they feel like they haven't had a voice yet, that is definitely something that I, you know, want to take into consideration.
Thank you, Commissioner Tibbs.
Could, I guess, Staff, can you, you brought, you said in the very beginning about the parking. We just had a recent case that was in the neighborhood, and I know there was parking concerns already. Could you just restate that about, you know, that part?
Certainly. So the zoning code requirement for parking in this location is that no parking is required. There was a text amendment May of 2021 that amended the zoning code to say that for uses that are located with the majority of their frontage on an immediate or long-term need multi-modal corridor are exempt from all parking requirements. And so they are not required to have any parking at all. They are providing 350 spaces and two levels of underground parking. So the zoning code does not require parking.
Okay. That last part was what I missed. So there is parking that is being provided, because...
Yes, 350 spaces, two levels.
Thanks for clarifying that, because I was thinking there was no parking, so thank you for understanding. Well, anyway, not that much. Yeah, that was, that was my biggest concern, because there is still a lot of, you know, which is great, and I do feel like this fits in well. I like the buffer with the train tracks, so, I mean, it seems like it's actually, you know, ideal for that community. And I guess as far as the community meeting, I feel like I'm okay with what the council person has indicated, you know, and all of them are the same way, but I know Councilman Sledge is very conscientious about making sure of those. So if he's said it on record, I trust that he will have those. So with, you know, with that, I'm supportive of this development.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. I too am surprised and a bit disappointed, our community meeting has not happened yet. The reason I'm a bit surprised was I was able to find a really great plan posted on Development Tracker. Thirty-three pages, really nice plan. It explains history, how they come up with this wonderful design, how they incorporate history. So this plan is really thoughtful. So if community knows this plan, I am sure they will really appreciate. And of course, they may, you know, have a chance to address to already great plan to more, even greater plan. So for that sense, I'm a bit surprised and a bit disappointed it did not happen. But as far as plan and thoughtfulness is concerned, I think location, height, usage, adaptable reuse of this historical plan, and all the element is really thoughtful. For that, I really, this is a great plan. And one thing I feel comfortable supporting this plan is the condition came from historic zoning commission regarding human remain or archaeology in all this condition before or during. So with that condition in mind, I feel much comfortable supporting it. So as far as deferral or support at this time, knowing, you know, Councilmember Sledge's commitment to the community, I am okay with passing as a, you know, commissioner, because the location policy, everything element of this plan meets policy guideline. So for that reason, I'm comfortable supporting today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Councilman?
Thank you, Chair. We had Metro Council this week, so we have, it's a double week. We had Council on Tuesday and Planning Commission on Thursday. So I was able to speak with my colleague from District 17 to learn a little bit more of what his thoughts were for the other proposal that came before us at the last meeting and get some initial thoughts from him on this one. And those were, seemed to be very favorable. Appreciate him communicating with the department that he will commit to having future community I think also the fact that this would not come before Metro Council for a public hearing until, I think, November at the earliest also gives me hope that whatever details need to be worked out can be. Similar to Commissioner Johnston, I was very concerned about the archaeological and human remains component of this property, given what's going on nearby. I've been regaled by some of Betsy Phillips's writings on Bob's Hole in particular, which is a new facet of the Nashville City Cemetery that I hadn't heard of before. Just want to remind everyone that there, the conditions do include having staff on site to look at not only just the site itself where excavation work would be done, but also in Nashville City Cemetery itself to help to ensure that there isn't any residual damage to the stones and things of that nature in memorials in the city cemetery park. So I feel like a lot of those concerns are addressed. If anything needs to be tweaked between now and the November public hearing, that could be done. Councilmember Sledge is not shy about deferring things at council or even sometimes making people start over. I've seen that happen. So I have full confidence in the District 17 Councilmember to work with SNAP going forward. And so finding that, I find that this is a really elegant way, I believe, of adding a music venue, which I think, it's sad to lose music venues, but adding new ones is good, too. And also to provide a buffer against the rail yard where I have trains next to residential. We often hear about that, and sometimes adding buildings as a physical barrier helps from that standpoint, too. So I think there's a lot of good in this proposal. If there are any changes, I think they will be minor and probably might improve it modestly, but I'm in support of the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman. Commissioner Henley?
A lot of my comments would have been very similar to the council member and Commissioner Johnson, but I do think it's important to note, I had a very engaging past few days being a resident. I had a lot of door knocks, and a lot of people came up and wanted to talk to me about this project. And as Commissioner Johnson said, you know, I know where to go and find the information. Actually, was able to look at it. I really liked the plan. I understand the context of it. I think it's a great opportunity for the community. But I do think there's a lot of negative sentiment that's being projected forward simply because people don't know. I mean, even some of our comments that we heard this evening are already answered. They're already out there. So I would just say to the applicants, I mean, you're in the community, you're neighbors, you know the neighbors, you know the organizations. It may be an opportunity to really extend some goodwill and just hear that they're, they don't feel informed enough, and how to make this project one where that's done better, and then also, you know, address that in the, in the, in the community meetings. And again, it's tough, because I would, my knee-jerk is to say a deferral makes sense, especially that's kind of our normal practice, but we've heard from the council member. I know Kobe, I know he'll do what he says he'll do. So with that being said, knowing how much time is there, my understanding of the plan, I think it's a good one. I'm inclined to support it, especially with his, with his comments that we heard here today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Clifton?
I think there's a dynamic that happens with a major change to a neighborhood like this, which is best described as fear and best remedied by a community meeting, particularly when there's a neighborhood group that has been there longer than most of us, decades and decades and decades. The fact that they, they aren't officially taking a position but looking for more information, I guess, is important to me. And I respect the council member. The fact that he is for it is a factor in whether or not, whether or not it will become law. It doesn't mean that we necessarily don't make process decisions, especially when it's this kind of a change, and especially in an area where, where there is such accelerated change. So I'm not sure I would ultimately be against it, but I can't vote for it the way it stands right now without having something in people's neighborhoods, perhaps at a time when many of them are not at work, so that they can be heard in person and have their questions answered.
Thank you, Commissioner Haynes.
So that we continue to educate ourselves on projects that come before us with no parking requirements, can I ask the applicant a couple of questions? Is that okay, Staff?
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Haynes.
Yeah, go ahead. Parking-related, yep. So the question was raised about the traffic study. Did it anticipate that the concert venue would be part of the plan when you did the traffic study?
Yes, part of, so since it operates mostly out of peak times, the entirety of the venue was not included, but we did take into consideration people that would arrive and leave during peak hours. So the concert venue was included in the study.
And my understanding is it's a 4,500-seat concert venue?
Yes.
And so how many trips did you all assume to fill that 4,500-square-foot concert venue?
One second, sorry.
And I'm asking this strictly for education purposes, because we're going to have more and more projects come before us.
So for the live venue, it was assumed in the AM peak, so between, for the peak hour between 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM, it is 68 vehicles, 68 trips. And then same for the PM peak. So during, between 4:00 and 6:00 PM, the peak hour of that, it was assumed 68 vehicles would be either entering or leaving the site.
And for the actual concerts themselves, which I'd assume would be after 6:00 PM, how many trips will go through the neighborhood to fill up the 4,500-seat venue?
We are doing additional analysis for off-peak times for this. The national standard for travel with, for like events to a concert venue as such is about 2 people to 2.5 people per vehicle. However, that does not take into account ride share. Obviously, this is an event, so you're going to have people that come into town, they're going to Uber, Lyft, walk, bike. So that number is, we haven't finished that number yet, but...
So to the applicant, I would encourage you, when Councilman Sledge has his neighborhood meeting, you all should have these numbers. That's going to be an important answer for the neighborhood. Thank you so much. That's all my questions.
Commissioner Johnson?
I don't want to be the person who pours or creates spoiled milk. And Lord knows, all the years I've been involved in this, I've been a very strong advocate for, for community involvement and community input into these design plans. However, one thing I think the Commissioners need to look at and begin to wrestle with the decision on this is that there's nowhere in the regs that says that an applicant has to go to the community for a plan. Nowhere. We have asked applicants to meet the requirements that this body has set forward for various developments. Once they meet there, we have, as a group, said, we would like to see the community be a part of that. We've not made it a reg. We've not made it a requirement. So I, and also, we've got the councilman who's saying, I think this is a great plan. I want this carried forward, and we will get the community on board if it is not on board. That's what I hear. So I, I'm in support of the application. I think it's great. I think that the councilman is, certainly has got a track record of being involved in the community and being an advocate for the community. So I'm in favor of the application.
Thank you, Chairman. Is, now we're in, we need a motion? Who wants to try to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve, make a motion that we approve with staff recommendation.
That's a proper motion, and there's a second. Commissioner Haynes seconds it. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no?
No.
Ayes have it, one no. It's approved. And hopefully, we know that the council will hold more publicity. All right. Next, so, so Commissioners, we've been here for about two hours. I know myself, I have to use the potty. And so I think, if it's okay, we'll take a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back. We'll reconvene. Hello? Hello, hello? Can you all hear me out there?
I don't think it's coming through yet.
Okay.
I can turn that one off. Turn that one off. Does that make it easier? No, I'm going to see, but it just sounded...
Hello? Testing, 1, 2, 3. Testing, 1, 2, 3.
No, it was working. Testing. That sounded good? No, but it's, I mean, it's showing that it's on over here. How's this?
Better. It's better than it was.
Is this better?
Move up to the front chairs. That way you can hear us. They can hear us electronically, and then until we get somebody here to fix it. And can you all hear us if we speak up in the front rows? Okay. All right. So we'll, we'll get going again, and we are on item number 13. And Lisa, you're going to present. All right, go ahead, Lisa.
Item number 13 is a request to rezone property located at 1718 Pecan Street. It's a request to rezone to a multifamily zoning district. Staff recommendation is to disapprove. The property is located on, north of, oh, it's working, okay. The property is located north of Pecan Street, sort of mid-block between 18th Avenue North and 24th Avenue North. The property is currently zoned R6, one and two-family residential, which would permit two units. The proposed zoning is RM20, which would permit four units. The land use policy for the...
The land use policy for the property is T4 Urban Neighborhood Maintenance, which is intended to maintain the general character of existing urban residential neighborhoods. The, oh, the surrounding area is entirely within the urban neighborhood maintenance area, as you can see indicated by the tan color. Other properties in the area have recently redeveloped with duplex units, consistent with the existing zoning. Staff recommendation is to disapprove. The proposed RM20 is not supported by the land use policy at this location. The subject parcel is located mid-block. There are single and two-family zoning and uses within the area. Inserting multifamily at this location, staff finds to be inconsistent with the policy goals. Therefore, we recommend disapproval.
Thank you, Lisa, and we will open this item for public hearing. And is the applicant in the room? Come on up. And so you'll have, please state your name and address, and you'll have 10 minutes, and you can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal. And we'll, and you can see the timer right there, sir.
Good evening, good evening, good evening. My name is Richard Robertson, I am the co-owner of this parcel that we're going to discuss this evening. I'm seeking your approval and also want to set things at ease for the staff if they have any, you know, a reserve, we want to go ahead and straighten that matter out so everything will flow accordingly and get a full approval across the board. I am a native Nashvilleian, but I'm currently living in the state of Ohio with plans to retire in four years. So I want to piggyback on something that the mayor of this city said when I was present last month, when I sat back there, I heard him talk about some things that he discussed with you guys, and he mentioned planning ahead. And that's exactly what I'm doing, is planning ahead for my retirement, to come back to the city where I was born and raised and grew up in, to reside here in Nashville. And I'm going to occupy one of the four units that I'm going to build on Pecan Street. All right? So it's going to be a beautiful project. I don't know how much information that my councilor had shared with you guys, but I'm going to present some photos. So once again, I'm very much interested in building a four-unit multifamily to attached townhomes and seeking full improvement to accomplish this construction project in the Buena Vista neighborhood. I'm not an investor, but I am committed in investing in my community and our great city. I trust that you will fully support and back this project. Over the last 15 years, we have all been eyewitnesses to a tremendous amount of growth in this city and the surrounding neighborhoods. The city looks nothing like it looked 20 years ago, or even when I was a child back in the 60s. It's a completely new city, it's a new day, and we have to move in a new direction on some things. So I'm asking that we can totally get behind this project. It's going to be a beautiful project. I plan on having two units in the front, Pecan Street facing with two-car garages, and also two in the back with alley access with two-car garages, but they would be front-facing. And access on both sides of these units, pedestrian walkway, I have a large enough lot to accomplish this project. My lot is 60 feet wide, and I have noticed that majority of the lots here in the city are 50 feet. We see projects like I'm proposing every day going up in new construction on lots that are smaller than my property. So I'm definitely seeking full support, full approval, and I'm also proposing to really uplift the community, to beautify the community. I have presented to the neighborhood at the neighborhood meeting over two months ago in full detail with photos, slides, a lot of information. And I've also done a little research about some of the history here in Nashville with some of the neighborhoods that are building these new units on Island Street over near Fisher University. That neighborhood is full of them, up and down pretty much each block, and I realize back in the 60s, some of these neighborhoods was already zoned R20 to achieve the four-unit constructions. But actually, what had happened, there was ranch-style units, and the contractors came in and bought them, tore them down, and went up with a high-rise new construction. So it's been done all over the city, but back in the 60s, the population of Nashville was roughly 360,000 people 60 years ago. So today, I do believe that the Nashville population is near, if not over, 1 million people. So we have changed a lot in the 60 years. And so with all the people seeking to make this beautiful city their home each day, want to relocate and live here and call it home, I want to be able to accommodate some of those families in the beautiful Buena Vista neighborhood as well. So I thank you.
Thank you, sir, and we will save two minutes for your rebuttal. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Come on up, welcome.
Good evening, my name is Dwayne Robertson, I heard you earlier to ask people to state their address, my current address is 4,000 Addison Road. And I'm up here, essentially, I mean, I'm not used to this forum, but I'm grateful for the opportunity, I promise you. And I just respect the process. And I'm just here because to some, I mean, I know his story, right? I know this journey, and like, we grew up in East Nashville in Sam Levy Home in the housing development in East Nashville. And we later moved to the James Casey Housing Development in East Nashville as well. And later, me and my mom and our family, we moved to, in the North Nashville area, the Cheetum Housing Area. So we've been in North Nashville about 25, 30 years. And I'm just thinking about like, so like, you know, I'm a little nervous, but I think about the fragility of like every statement that I make, like, how does it merge and mesh with like my brother's dream? Like, he's so close to it, right? Like, and for some technicalities, like, I don't know, like, could be forfeited or opposed for it, right? And I just think about like, wow, you know, all those stages of my life, like, for the most part, like, you know, he's, you know, he served proudly in the military, and, you know, once he got a job coming out of high school, he's been employed ever since, right? And even the jobs that's taken him out of state, which is where he's at now, and just looking forward to like, when he does finally able to retire, he can reside here in Nashville and just create something, you know, for him as well as his daughter and son, just, you know. And so I think about all of that, and I think about like, you know, the past few months, the community council meetings that we went to at the community precinct out in North Nashville, and just how when he's presented this, like, he's had no opposition from anybody at the meetings, none. Like, it's, and Councilwoman Toomes will attest to this, like, it's been overwhelming support for it. And as a matter of fact, everybody's been wondering like, what is the, like, well, there's some technicalities you have, some zoning issues and whatnot, but, you know, we went out and stomped the grounds and went out and met some of the neighbors and got a great deal of support from them. And I just think about it, and it was overwhelming through his ask about the change, the good change that was coming to this area if he could complete this project.
Thank you, sir, your time's up.
All right, thank you.
It goes by quick, you did great. Thank you very much.
Oh, no, that's good.
You just said it.
Just, you just said it there, yeah, sorry, that was...
Perfect. Thank you, appreciate you coming. Anyone else wishing to speak? Come on up.
Hello, my name's Brittany Roberts, that's my dad, and this is my uncle. I'm at 2001 Biscayne, I actually live in Miami, but I'm co-owner of it with the property. And I am likewise here in support, and I just want to reiterate a few things that Councilwoman Toomes had mentioned before, just in terms of the support, in terms of the vision, in terms of the neighborhood. As she mentioned as well, she's likewise pretty close to the details and is very much so in support of the project. Likewise, the neighbors, as already mentioned, are also in support. And just a few things to double-click on is that most of the lots around the home or the lot that's there are actually already developed, right? So the fear, maybe the concern that others would want to come do the same thing, it's really a non-issue because there's, they're already developed, it's already done. And then in terms of being complementary and within the characteristic of the neighborhood, the project that my dad selected very much does complement the neighborhood, right? And I'm a person who cares about design, so the design is very nice, and it does go along with the current look and feel of the area. And as my dad mentioned, he's going to live in one, so there'll also be parking there. So if there's any concern around that, it's not, it's also not a really real concern. The Fire, Marshal, and Traffic both have actually already approved it. And then I think my dad mentioned this, but just to again reiterate, this is not going to be an Airbnb, right? It's a place really for folks to come to live, to build their home, to make a home, and that as well. And so, yeah, so I'm Brittany, and I definitely am supporting. And the last thing I'll just mention, as I have 20, a little over 20 seconds left, is addition to the folks who are here tonight, there's over 30 signatures, and I just want to read quickly what it is that they've signed in support of. So I hereby make known to Councilwoman Toomes of District 2 and to the Metro Planning Commission that I give my support to Mr. Roberts rezoning of his property located at 1718 Pecan Street. Mr. Roberts' project has been very well received by the Buena Vista Heights community. It will be a great project that continues to move our fast-growing urban neighborhood forward in a positive direction. So who can I leave all of this additional support?
Yeah, leave it to Lisa. Thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, anyone else wishing to speak in support? Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Tony Carlou, I live at 436 Ezel Pike, and I have known Mr. Roberts for 50 years. I hadn't planned on coming to say anything, but when I recognized who he was, I grew up in the same Sam Levy Homes, and I'm so proud of you. And I know that his intentions are good, so I just wish him well with this project.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in support? All right, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? All right, seeing nobody wishing to speak in opposition, you have two minutes on a rebuttal, sir, but nobody spoke against the project, but you can have a final say if you would like.
I noticed that I had received one email from Councilwoman Toomes, and the email, I think it may have came from the staff, speaking of the nature of similar projects in my community, right? And I noticed that it's a new project that's completed one block over from my property that has four units on that lot. Before that lot got the four units, they had to get it rezoned so they could do the four units. And it's closer than 1,000 feet from our property. It's roughly probably 600 feet from our property. So it is similar projects in my neighborhood, just like I'm going to build, but I'm going to put one in the front and one in the back instead of all four of them, side by side. So I ask that you take all of this stuff in great consideration before you make a final decision and back this project, because we have overwhelming support. It's more to it than just the signatures. The Councilwoman has received text messages and emails, and I have them on my phone as well, and getting more support as we move forward with the project. And the community is very much involved with it, and I want to select a property or a product that's going to not only fit but enhance the beauty of the neighborhood. And the community is roughly, it's moving fast. It's a very urban area, and it's already a lot of things in the community that are not healthy for the community that was allowed to go forward. One such project is just a lot of Airbnb units, and it's just, that did nothing to enhance our community. So my project is going to enhance it, because we're going to have people calling these units home. They're going to raise their families, and I'm going to raise my grandkids and my families as well on my property. And it's going to be a beautiful project that'll make the city of Nashville very proud with your support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we already heard from the council member, so seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Haynes, you want to go first?
So, Lisa, remind me, if we were to support staff's recommendation with the council's support, it would then go on to council, and they would require 27 votes?
That's right. If there's a recommendation of a disapproval from this body, then it requires 27 votes as a, on third reading, as opposed to 21 votes, which would be the normal threshold.
And as the applicant met with the staff, were there any other considerations given for an SP or for other types of zoning besides RM20 within the T4 Neighborhood Maintenance Land Policy?
There wasn't considerations of others. I mean, I, so there's a range of zoning that would be supported by any of our policies. So Neighborhood Maintenance gives a, T4 Urban Neighborhood Maintenance gives a range of RS3.75, which is single-family, up to RM20A typically. And so we try to look at the location of something within a policy, what the surrounding policy is when we're considering our recommendation, and because it was surrounded by R6, then staff felt that the current zoning was appropriate. Now that said, you can sort of see on the map that there is neighborhood evolving nearby to the west, where you've got more intense zoning and uses like OR20. Clarksville Pike is sort of south and just off of the screen, and Clarksville Pike is an arterial, and so there is an alley present on this site, and so there are certainly some characteristics that could lend itself to additional density here.
All right, I'm going to listen to my fellow commissioners. Commissioner Hanley?
Well, these are, and many of my fellow commissioners know this, these are the type of projects that I really like. And I've actually had a project, not extremely similar, but as Lisa mentioned, having and sharing a lot of those factors, and because of neighborhood maintenance, I ended up going through an SP process, and I appreciate Commissioner Haynes bringing up some of those questions that he did. And, you know, for me, I think there's a, there's a lot that comes with the key factors here, which was support from the council member. We gave that a lot of weight earlier, and Councilmember Toomes showed up and expressed that, and then having the amount of support that is there from the neighborhood, I think is very strong. My only question is, you know, because we didn't have some of those discussions about what else could be there, I know one of the things that oftentimes comes up, particularly as I'm championing for these types of developments, is just an additional condition that it's not short-term rentals. It seems like the applicant is, does not have that in mind at all, but I just would put that forward to our body, just to say that, you know, as we're considering this and discussing this, and that's a consideration, but I'd be extremely hypocritical if I was opposed to a project like this coming into the community. And so I, right now, I'm in favor, but as Commissioner Haynes, I listen to my fellow commissioners.
And I would suggest that if there was a desire for it to specifically exclude that we do have the NS districts, and so there could be a recommendation of approval of an NS district, which just, so it doesn't have to be a condition, it's just that zoning district.
So Lisa, it would be a T4 NS, is that what that would be? Or what?
It would be RM, RM20 NS. So for our zone, the way that our zoning code has worked, we have RM20, we have RM20A, which would be an alternative district, where for a site like this, it would require certain things like all access from the alley, because there's an existing alley. And then we have RM20 NS and RM20A NS. It's a smorgasbord, you just, you know. So we have the A districts that do some things like keep all of the access on the alley, and then we have the NS districts that would prohibit short-term rentals.
Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate the applicant coming out, especially appreciate hearing from not only the councilman but a lot of the neighbors. A lot of times, I think there's a hesitation for upzoning one particular parcel, just for a number of reasons. One of those is that as a government, we can't treat people differently, right? So we have to have a land use or a policy decision typically around why we're granting an entitlement to one property because it is land use and not others, right? And so that is where this gets into a concern for whether this would lead to any other number of rezonings for higher density. A lot of times, if we were to do that, we could make a justification because it's on a corner or things like that. And I know that your neighbor's supportive view is really important, but like, we as a council can't, it's not, you know, for us, it's not necessarily... a council can't, it's not, you know, for us, it's not necessarily that, if we just have, it's a land use decision ultimately, right? But what I will say is that that information from neighbors supporting it, I do believe is persuasive. I think that hopefully we will get to a point in our city where we have a little bit more of maybe sort of a form-based code to say that the aspect of the neighborhood that we're trying to maintain in neighborhood maintenance has more to do with street setbacks, hopefully having some trees in the yard, overall building dimensions or things like that, where that kind of a built pattern is more of what we're trying to maintain than single or two-family zoning per se. We're not quite there yet as a city, but I know that we're having a lot of discussion about trying to find ways to add general density, and I'm persuaded that, given the context here, even though it is mid-block, which it's harder to make that justification for transit or a lot of those things that would ordinarily support density, but I'm persuaded that, given the context, given the support from the neighbors who live in the community about what it is that they're trying to maintain, is met by this particular application. However, I would also recommend the NS designation. So I would be in favor of it in this particular context, given the support, given the overall context, and just frankly, given the need for housing, even in neighborhood maintenance areas. Hopefully, ways the city can get to a little bit, like I said, more of a, where we're talking about maintaining building forms and not so much the number of units as what we're trying to preserve. But I'm in support of the application with an NS designation. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. I do appreciate applicant had a community meeting and have lots of surrounding neighbor support. So, which is a great thing to have, you know, community support. But as a commissioner, I kind of remind myself, if the staff analysis does it outside of the policy. So in that, you know, point of view, I think staff analysis is not, I think staff analysis and recommendation is based on the policy. So for that policy, I don't think staff had any error, or I don't disagree with staff analysis. It is a mid-block. It is neighborhood maintenance, and the surrounding area is pretty much single-family and duplex. Another multi-housing is towards the west, you know, neighborhood evolving area, so mid-block, I think staff analysis is right on. So for that sense, I cannot bring myself to support this zone change. However, I think ultimately, council is the sort of authority when it comes to zone, and having so much surrounding neighbor support, I think council has a great tool to move forward. But as a planning commissioner's standpoint, I cannot support, I am in support of staff recommendation of disapproval based on the policy. But if council member move forward, I would like to recommend NS designation.
Commissioner Tibbs?
I guess I do agree, I do agree with the analysis that staff did to get to this point. I don't know why I'm looking at the floor, but I do agree with that. However, I do feel like, kind of like, well, not like Commissioner Hanley and Councilman Withers pointed out, I do feel like that even though this is a mid-block development, that what is being proposed is appropriate. And especially, you know, I've just been doing the Google Walk through the neighborhood, I think especially considering, you know, it almost will be somewhat contextual to it. I was still not sure, could you, I know Commissioner Haynes, I think, asked it about, was the SP tool brought up to them? Would that be better so that it's not a zone change in the middle? I know that you considered the zoning with SP, but just, it wouldn't change it forever, you know, SP goes away with that, so.
So I think that, given the size of the site, I mean, given the size of the site, I think that the RM twenty A NS would likely achieve the same goals that we would be looking for with any sort of SP, which would be access on the alley, you know, making sure that we're having sort of a pedestrian-friendly front, where we've got continuous sidewalk, you know, consolidating. So I think that those are the sorts of things that if we were to consider an SP, that they can be accomplished through that tool, which is an sort of easier process for moving forward or permitting and those sorts of things. If you start to sort of walk into the SP process, then you're talking about final site plan through planning, building permits through planning, and I think you can achieve the same thing with RM.
I think the A district is the key design and mobility feature that you would wanna achieve.
That's correct.
That's the first, would be the first recommendation for your consideration, if you wanted to entertain the proposal with an adjustment. So if you wanted to keep the density, but maybe adjust how it accesses the street, for example.
Okay. Well, I, then, as long as we can have those, I'll use the kind of word restrictions, but especially the NS, but the A as well, I'd be supportive of it.
So, just to be clear, guys, that, guys, commissioners, it would be, what you're saying, Lisa, is an RM twenty A NS would?
RM twenty.
RM twenty.
A added on gets you consolidated access on the alley and some other design standards. NS is no short-term rental, so RM twenty A NS.
Got it. Okay. Vice Chair?
I think I am in support of the direction that Commissioner Tibbs is going, and certainly as I look at the rest of the street and the amount of development that is occurring and the density of the new development in this area, it does feel right. I'm wondering if it's possible to have all alley access for four units? That I'm not, it sounded like the applicant was thinking of a front access.
We have seen projects where you have that many units on a lot. I'm thinking particularly like in the Wedgewood-Houston-Chestnut Hill area, where you've got alleys and multifamily zoning. So yes, I mean, it would be, it would maybe mean that one of the units doesn't have garages, it's surface parked instead in the back. But yes, I think that there is still opportunity for that number of units. It would just maybe have to be reconfigured a bit.
Okay. Well, then, I'm happy to make a motion. Is this something that we should ask the applicant about, or just?
Ask.
Ask, I mean, would, is it, does this work with your design plan to do all alleys off the, I mean, all units off of the alley?
Well, actually, I'm gonna do the two front units off of Pecan Drive. They wouldn't need to utilize the alley.
But they?
The alley would only be utilized by the two rear units, because the two rear units will face, front-facing Pecan, but they will have alley access, and it would be a pedestrian walk from the front of Pecan that'd give them access as well, if they're walking or using public transportation. They only need to enter the alley to park if they're gonna park in their garage, and it would be adequate space, because the property is an oversized lot, and it's not a lot of them within the city. Most of them are fifty by one-fifty, and my property gives me more flexibility to accommodate a better structure, to make everything flow cohesive with everything that's going on in the surrounding neighborhood.
So I think, based on what you're advising, though, if we add the RM twenty A designation, it means that all four units would have to have access off the alley. So that's the, that's what we're trying to figure out. And so I think we have some comfort with that, because it gives us some of the other design standards that are appropriate, given this zoning change in this neighborhood. And the question is just, you know, can you make that work from what your design is for the, to have all four units have access off the alley?
Yes, that would be possible, but I was trying to do the front, two units with front access, so they wouldn't have to be in the alley. But the property roughly sits about three hundred and twenty feet from the end of the block, roughly the size of a football field. So it's not an extreme-long block when we speak of mid-block. It's not actually, you know, half a mile.
Well, may I suggest, I'm sure we're, it's hard to design a plan or kind of on the fly, so I don't wanna put the applicant in a bad spot or us. So Lisa, let me ask you this. If the commission were to recommend an RM the A NS, and the council member, that would give the applicant some time to work through implications, and perhaps the council member could weigh her own decision, could that move forward if she were to change from the A district to, to remove the A district? Would that become disapproved? I'm trying to find a way to create some time for everybody to be able to evaluate without us trying to do this on the spot. I've put you on the spot now. I'm sorry. It's just what I'd have.
It would be the same intensity from a density standpoint. I'm not sure anyone has ever asked me this question before.
Well, I like to be a first. I'm going to suggest that we offer the A district, given it's going to be the same density, and the councilwoman in her discretion can evaluate. You'll have some time to evaluate, and I would trust the councilwoman to make a good decision, and we're happy to consult with her if the sense of the commission is in this spot.
Well, it gives the applicant time to look at what that would do as well, so. And I think if we do that, that gives us more of a comfort level that we are, even though we're doing a spot zone change, we'll, you know, potentially, I don't wanna jump ahead, but it's more aligned with, yeah, yeah.
I think that's fair.
Okay. And I assume the applicant could come talk to staff to get a better?
Could I find a question?
Yeah, Commissioner Johnson?
So, between now and then, council member and applicant meet, and for whatever the reason, our M twenty A designation is not achievable, so at the council level, they decided have to remove the A, so that point, the bill becomes a disapproval bill. Is that correct?
I was asking Lisa if that were the case, and I think what Lisa is saying is that because the intensity would be, would remain the same, that I would likely not recommend that that be disapproved. To make that more positive, I would, I would say it's still approved, especially since we've had this discussion on the record, would be my recommendation.
Agree.
I think the commission, by the way, can always say, when conditioning projects, if this changes, to clarify, we want the staff to know if this changes at council, it's a disapproval. So the commission can always give us more of that feedback, but our standard is typically intensity, level of density.
All right, so Vice Chair, we're ready for a motion.
So, so I don't exactly know the, I mean, I know what the zoning recommendation is, but, so we're recommending disapproval of staff's recommendation and approval of a rezoning for RM twenty A NS.
So that's a proper motion and a second. And so proper motion, second, any other discussion that this will change to a RM twenty A NS? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Pose no, ayes have it. And we are on to item fifteen. And thank you all for coming in. Appreciate it very much.
Appreciate your time.
All right, item fifteen.
This is item fifteen, rezoning at four thirty-six Ezel Pike. Request is rezoned from AR two A and R ten to CL Commercial Limited. Our recommendation is to approve zoning on the site. Front end is R ten, back end is AR two A. Policy on the site, there's a little bit of conservation for wet weather conveyance, but most of the site is D district industrial. So the surrounding uses, mostly single-family, but all variously zoned CS, R ten, AR two A, and then office use in the rear zone IWD. We judge that CL is consistent with the goals of this policy. This policy's meant for non-hazardous manufacturing, distribution centers, mixed-business parks, those type of uses, and this rezoning would be used for parking and shuttle service to support the nearby industrial and transportation uses. And I would like to point out that CS zoning is directly adjacent to the north. So our recommendation is to approve. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll open the item for public hearing, and is the applicant in the room? Welcome. You have ten minutes. State your name and address for?
Thank you. My name is Tony Carlou. I reside at four thirty-six Ezel Pike. To all of the commissioners, the chairman, and Lisa, you rock. We really appreciate you taking the time to listen. I live, I've lived at four thirty-six Ezel Pike for sixteen years, and I decided that I would start an airport service, parking services, because the International Airport, of course, as you know, is growing exponentially, and I wanted to set up a business that would create generational wealth for me and my family, and that is in part why I decided to start this business.
Thank you. And we'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone in the room wishing to speak in support? In support, come on up.
Once again, my name is Richard Roberts. I know Mr. Carlou for quite, quite a long time. We grew up together, and he's always been adventurous and wanted to generate things that are also be a wealth, and also he cares about what goes on in his community, and I think that the airport is growing, because I use it from time to time, and it don't look like nothing what it looked like twenty years ago, so I'm sure that they could use some additional parking, and it would benefit him and only also the airport as well. So I think his approval is very well appropriate.
Thank you. Anyone else in support? Come on up.
I'm Dwayne Roberts again, and of course, we did, he's just a couple years older than me, and I ain't gonna say his age, but, yeah, but you know somebody in the neighborhood of good character, you never forget it, and that's what he's been, and to see him do this is right in line with who he's always been. And so I'm in support of this, because I'm sure not only would he build a generational wealth, but he'll be an asset to his community and has always been. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up. Welcome.
Hello. My name's Kay Clark, and we are the property owners of four thirty-eight Ezel Pike, which is next to Tony's, and four forty Ezel Pike, which is next to that house. And we're wanting disapproval of this, because basically, we're gonna have a parking lot in our backyard. I mean, we have a pool, and when we look out, we're gonna see a parking lot. This is completely residential. There are no businesses from Murfordsboro Road all the way to the end of our road. We're already having drainage problems from something somebody has done, a peel, so it's wiping out the ditch that separates our backyard from our very backyard where our garage is, and we just feel like this is probably gonna make that worse. And that's it, I guess.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, rebuttal. Two minutes. Two minutes.
I'd like to add that I've spent $125,000 developing my property, and I am a person who really works hard. I get along well with my neighbors. All of my neighbors have been very supportive of my wanting to do this parking lot business, and of course, we will have the best security, the best lighting, and we've always been a friend to our neighbors, and that will never change.
Thank you. And ma'am, unfortunately, this is not a run-in debate, but, and so, you know, the public hearing will have to close, and I apologize for that, but it's just our process. But we'll have a lively debate, I'm sure, and try to figure this out. So anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed, and before we start, Lisa has gotten communication from the council member, and if you would state on record what that is.
Certainly. The council office forwarded me a message from council member Virture that asked for items within her district to be deferred from the meeting tonight. She was unable to attend. She had a conflict with another meeting.
So out of respect for the council members, I mean, we usually do what they say, but we're in the, I would like, we also generally have the discussion so that some of that conversation can, can start. And then depending on how comfortable you all feel, we'll either close the public hearing or not. So Commissioner Tibbs, you wanna go first?
Definitely, you know, all night, I've been kind of consistent with leaning a lot on council person's recommendation experience, and I do feel like this could be a good one for deferral, just so she can kind of weigh in more onto what the community is saying, but also, you know, what the applicant is, you know, attempting to develop. It meets the staff recommendation, so it looks like all the tools are there, but I just think the cohesiveness of it with the council person's backup will be good, so I would support deferral.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you. This type of zoning change is a difficult one, because the base zoning is residential. However, the policy on top is industrial. So in that sense, you know, zone change request makes sense, considering directly adjacent to north property is commercial, CS. So CL, just looking at the, you know, the picture, two-dimensional picture alone, parcel map alone, makes sense. However, like I said, that's a difficult one, because sometimes, policy and actual zoning does not match. So for that, I think a more in-depth, community engaged will be in order, so I'm in support of deferral.
Councilman.
Thank you, Chair. This is a really interesting case, because what I hadn't really thought about is the, kind of the split zoning that goes across these two lots. I think this is pretty unusual in a number of capacities. I do also really feel a lot of sympathy for the neighbors about it's a generally residential character and that you would have what is very much a commercial use next door, and I think a lot of times, whether or not from a policy standpoint, a lot of times in city, in urban areas where we have commercial uses that are being introduced next to residential, we have a pretty robust discussion about landscape buffer yards and just a whole lot more detail that goes into that to make sure that if you are gonna have a commercial use next to residential, that some sort of protections are put in place to buffer between those two, and I don't know to what extent that is, has been worked out to date or even can be handled through the base zoning, so. But assuming we do defer, which I would support, that'd be something I would want to learn more about the next time.
Thank you, Councilman. Commissioner Haynes?
Commissioner Henley? Yeah, just from the map that's on the screen, I think, you know, we see a variety of different zonings, but I think CS zoning is the zoning that's to the, I'm gonna say north, at least planned north of the property. But what's been suggested is CL, which is limited. Are there any, just anecdotally, are there any specific reasons why CL, I know it's limited, does that infer or come with some requirements on screening buffering to the council member's point? I think that'd be important to mention.
Certainly. So the buffer requirements for CS or CL, either one would be the same. CL has less FAR allowance than CS. CL restricts uses more than CS, which is a broader range of commercial uses. That's the primary differences.
And this is education for me as well, but I know there's a, I believe, I should say, there's an A designation that comes with CL as well? Is that, is that true? And if so, are there any design? Yeah, sorry, I don't, I know this is putting on the spot yet again, but I think it would be important to understand what that might be, if this is gonna come back before us.
There is a CLA district. The A standards, let me see, this is outside of the UZO, and so the A standards are gonna differ between if you're in the UZO or outside of the UZO. It's typically gonna have build-twos versus setback, so it would push buildings closer. But if you're primarily building parking, most of the design standards for the A districts are related to building design.
Thank you for that. And extending my comments, I do think, you know, a deferral's in order per request from the council member.
So Commissioner Henley, it's, you're the last to speak on this, and so, Lisa, would it, is it a two-meeting deferral? Is that, I think one meeting might not be enough time, but...
Right. So one meeting would mean that we're publishing again relatively quickly, and so I would probably suggest two meetings would be more appropriate.
Make a motion for a two-meeting deferral.
It's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of two-meeting deferrals, say aye. Pose no, ayes have it, and the item is deferred.
And Chair, I'm sorry, for clarification, was the public hearing closed? Or did it remain open on that one?
Commissioner Henley, I, I think, what is your thoughts on, I think?
I think, I think, leave it open. Yeah. I think it was closed. I think we should have it open.
All right, so we'll, the intent, so let's, let's go back, and the intent and of Commissioner Henley's motion is to defer to meetings and keep the public hearing open. And so is there a motion for that? Second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Pose no, ayes have it. That was probably butchered, permanent procedure, but that's okay. Next, and so we appreciate everybody coming down. Thank you very much, and we are on to items and other business, historic. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. At the last meeting, I reported we will have a new historic zoning commissioners, and Commissioner Clifton asked their name, and that time I didn't have it, so today I have it. So two new commissioners, Ms. Beth Cushion and Ms. Samantha Pyle. So I'm looking forward to meeting with them at the next historic zoning commission. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. And Commissioner Haynes, Parks?
So as you guys may have read, we have a challenge at Brookmead Park in West Nashville. We are having a specially-called meeting on September 26 at the Bellevue Community Center to invite all the public and try to hear everyone's concerns. Parks has limited resources to deal with this, but we've been getting a lot of emails, and so we're having a specially-called meeting on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Haynes. We don't have anything under the executive committee report, and Director, do you have anything else to report?
Just quickly, I thank all of you for your patience. I know Kelly has been reaching out and asking for availability. We need to bring the commute, the East Bank Plan in for your review and approval, and just given some schedules and recusals, it's been a bit challenging, so bear with us. I sent you a proposed date that hasn't been finalized, but it's October the 6th. I do think that's what we're going to do. We just haven't actually advertised it yet, but anything you can do, just to be over-communicating with me about your availability or need to recuse for any reason will help me know how to plan. So, and thank you for all your great input today.
So make sure, if you haven't responded, Kelly, make sure you respond. Okay. All right, legislative report, Councilman.
Just want to thank our wonderful staff again. There's a very long list of public meetings, but that is by no means the end of all of the meetings that they're having, so I just want to thank our staff for all their work and really have also enjoyed seeing the collaboration between NDOT and WIGO and multiple metro departments in that process, so that everyone really is rowing in the same direction to get the best possible result for our city, so I think that's great work. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes other business, and is there a motion to adjourn? Or adjourn?